So we're not going to go down the list of the old cars tonight. All right, we do have one active item on the agenda tonight, and we're going to take care of that first. Item one, attorney selection. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Saxon, Riley, and Riley P L L C for legal services. That's the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Brodenman. So in the last sixty days, our current attorneys have been on creative trial notice where we found that there were several projects that they hadn't finished. Things that were a year or more out. And so we basically put them on notice that they would be reviewing their actions and how they were handling the city of Sunnyside. And we felt like after that trial period, we still weren't getting the best service. So our current prosecutor has agreed to begin a contract, and they are willing to start today. And so we can have a crossover between the two attorney firms. Kurt Ferguson was fine with the notice, and they totally understood. They had recently lost one of their attorneys, so not only were they short-staffed sixty days ago, but even more short-staffed right now. And Saxon, Riley, and Riley have assured of us that they are ready to hit the ground running with us with the appropriate staff and number of attorneys from day one. With that, I would consider having the mayor to see if we can make a motion.
Well, first, we're going to give the opportunity for council members to ask any questions or make any comments. So council members, do we have any questions?
Um, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Hart.
Um, the Saxon, Riley, and Riley, are they currently working on some to the municipal court?
Yes, they're prosecuting attorneys for them. And they also are the attorneys that represent the city of Prosser. So they're local, their office is very much more local than in West Ridgeland. And they really honestly, I worked with Howard Saxon through an entire zoning code change when I worked in Prosser at my first city job. And he was wonderful, worked for very knowledgeable, and that's what we really need right now.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And how long is this agreement for?
It's limited, we do. The agreement actually does not have a termination date. It is annual renewable unless either party gives notice and then we just keep it.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Is it comfortable in price or?
Twenty dollars an hour more. So we could currently pay one fifty, and this would go up to one seventy. And we know that there's quite a few things that we haven't gotten any very good services on, especially lately now that they have a reduced staff.
And those problems usually cost us more than twenty dollars.
Correct. And also, we'd like to just point out in regards to the hourly wage, the amount that the one fifty that we were paying to Kurt Ferguson hasn't been renegotiated in more than ten years. So in all likelihood, if we had actually gone through our R S P process for this, things would have come back higher. But it's good that we had the money that we wanted to work with.
Other questions or comments? W D Mayor, I see that you're on the screen. Do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no questions, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed the contract. I support this move. I think it's a good move. The manager and I had our lunch earlier this week and talked about this issue, so I wholeheartedly support this, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. So from my perspective as well, I reviewed the contract, and manager and I have spoken about this a couple of times, actually. And owing to the fact that we are going to be doing, or whoever's going to be doing a major revamp and review of our zoning. And this firm has a great deal of experience with city zoning. I think that can be beneficial to us. And we are definitely in need of a zoning review and some changes and some updates. So, um, yeah, I think from where I'm sitting right now, it looks like a very good move. With that being said, what is the desire of council on this item? You're the representative for that. Do you want to get this individual opportunity to speak or ask questions?
This is Ben Riley. He is one of the attorneys with the Saxon, Riley, and Riley. So he'd like to hear a few words from you, because I am Ben.
Oh, sure. Council without objection?
Without objection.
All right. So tell us a little about your firm, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ben Riley. I'm one of the partners with Saxon, Riley, and Riley. I work with Howard Saxon and my wife, Elise Riley. Between the firm and I, we probably have over sixty years of experience in Austin, in the great cities of Washington, and to an order. So we look forward to the opportunity to work with Sunnyside and go into the prosecution for the city. And we have a lot of similar experience with other cities in the area as well. And so we look forward to this opportunity to work for the city of Sunnyside, and we believe we can help. Do you have any questions on our qualifications, what we've done in the past?
Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Riley?
I don't see anything coming up, but is there any conflict of interest of doing change for the city? I don't see that they'll override each other.
No, in fact, they kind of work together, strangely enough. A lot of criminal enforcement, prison enforcement as well, and everything works hand in hand. Also, they already have the same people doing both. Perfect, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Riley, the city manager has done a great deal of explaining about her experience with you and the kind of work that you do, so we feel fairly well briefed on that. We got the opportunity to go over the contracts, and I think we're all pretty comfortable with that, just as hard as to explain a few things that also work in our favor. So I think that we are ready to entertain a motion. So what is the desire of council on this item?
Some of those.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Beeler, to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Saxon, Riley, and Riley P L L C for legal services. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, no. Okay, captain's aye, they both was no. Aye to who, aye, motion carries. I'm sorry. A little bit out of step there, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Three seconds delay of.
It stunned me a little bit.
Yeah, caught me off guard too, so. All right, motion carries. While the city manager, you may enter into the agreements. Item B, financial report and twenty twenty-three budget calendar review. That's the thing.
And we'll happily send this over to a statement supporter. This is the first year I haven't had to give this report in the entire. Thank you guys for your patience and waiting for me to get this information through. This, um, this report here goes back in history a little bit farther than we will do on regular quarterly reports going forward. But this is my first full financial report to you guys. I wanted to make sure I kind of, you know, we all think that with our history of understanding finances. So the report provided, the first page shows the fund balance history from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-two. And the second page is the numbers, the actual numbers that back up that graph. But as you can see, the city did go through obviously some financial hardships, especially in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and twenty eighteen, where we still had some of our funds in the negative, which is actually against the law to do. And I know you guys worked very, very hard to get that turned around. And it's very obvious that you guys did an excellent job. So you can see the jump from twenty sixteen of a total fund balance of six point six million up to the end of twenty twenty-one at thirteen point two million. So we doubled what we had in the bank from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one. Our estimated fund balance to the end of twenty twenty-two is ten point nine, close to eleven. We are, this is a conservative, when we do budgeting, we always budget very conservatively. So this is a very conservative estimate on that fund balance based on actual revenues and expenditures. It will likely trend higher than that. But this is our kind of worst-case scenario budgeting as we do. And then our current fund balance right now, so the amount of money we actually have in the bank is fifteen point one million. So one thing I want to point to on this graph is that big blue chunk at the bottom that starts on the top, a little before the middle, and is a nice big chunk on the right-hand side. That's our general fund. So that's the money that's raised for police, fire, supplements, street, paid for finance, clerk staff, pension salaries. This is the one that was really struggling, that had no money in it to begin with, and is now in a very healthy place. The other ones to pay attention to is the street fund, which is that orange bar above that. That is the one where you guys enacted that P V D fund, and that significantly helps in covering costs in the street fund for maintenance and operations.
So what was the biggest contributor to the improvement in the general fund?
It looks like you guys increased, you chose to increase some of the utility tax, which brought in a bigger chunk of revenue, which is a pretty good chunk for the general fund. Also, sales factor revenue has just increased across the board. So those are two big contributors. But in addition, you were operating on, I hate to call it a shoestring budget, but it's been quite a while that the city's been operating at a relatively low budget for the amount of staff and services compared to other cities. So, and that's one of the things we are working on changing right now and adding positions and stuff, which I know is kind of scary to do. But in reality, in order to provide the services, we do need to add those positions in order to be able to get through what we're supposed to do.
How will the ARPA funds affect this budget? Are they just going to be a completely different network altogether?
Yeah, actually, if you go ahead, that leads us right to page three. Page three shows your expenses and expenditures. So this is basically all the money that comes in and all the money that goes out every year. So the green bars are what we bring in, and the orange bars are what we send out. So we started receiving carryback money in twenty twenty. So you'll see there's a lighter green section at the very top of that. That accounts for that carryback money. And then in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, that's when we received the ARPA funding. So that's that most, that margin at the top. So in reality, the, I know it seems like a lot at, you know, four point seven, I think, millions. In reality, it's really only, I mean, I think about thirteen percent of our revenue. It's not a huge chunk. So it does impact the budget positively, but we also are required to spend that money as well. So it will increase our next seven years accordingly. But as you can see, in twenty sixteen, we start off good. We always want that green bar to be pretty even with our orange bar. Slightly over, slightly under is what you have your fund balance for. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, obviously, we're still struggling. Our expenditures were more than our revenue. And then twenty nineteen is when it looks like we need some of those changes to revenue, which sort of helps push that revenue number up to support the services. Looks like in twenty nineteen, we had two point five million dollars in excess revenue that stayed in the fund. So that helps shore up that general fund to start that fund balance that we need. And in twenty twenty, we added another two point two million. But that was before we even received ARPA money. So we just by what we're processing, what our business is doing, we did increase that fund balance by about two point, or four point seven million, sorry, in those two years. Do you guys have any other questions on that?
Questions, council?
The one thing that I think is interesting is that the, where the ARPA money came in has not dramatically changed the revenue.
Yeah, it is, it's a large sum of money that doesn't have a lot of strings attached to it, so it's great. We can use it for a lot of things. But in the full scope of our budget, yeah, it doesn't make up a huge margin. So a lot of these expenditures that we're adding, when you look at the entire budget, they're not really a huge portion of the entire operation. Even though they are intimidating, I know the buyout expenditures that you haven't historically made, it is, you know, it is not a huge portion of what we're spending. And then if you, so if you look at the twenty twenty-two budget portion, you'll notice that our orange and green lines are pretty close to each other. That does leave a hundred, I think about a hundred and eight thousand dollar margin of revenue over expenditures. But this does include us having allocated all of that ARPA funding. So for twenty twenty-three, there won't be any, well, we will still be spending the money, so likely our fund balance will be much higher than we're estimating here because we won't have to spend all the ARPA money. But at this point, it's allocated, so it is considered part of that expense budget. Does that make sense? On that. All right, so the last two pages mainly show operations and maintenance expenditures. When we talk about city expenditures, there's, there's the things that you know you're going to have to pay every single year regardless. Those are your overhead and your staff costs, the things that it takes just to run the city operations. And then there's capital expenditures and debt service. But those are different, they some, they often, they come and they go. So the first chart shows a breakdown of just our operations and maintenance spending. So you can see the blue at the bottom and the orange above that. Those are personnel charges, salaries, and benefits for staff. So you can, if you look at the total, like if you look at the difference between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, just a really good example. While our full expenditures for operations and maintenance increased by about fourteen percent, the difference for personnel only actually went up by about half of that. So while we were increasing expenditures in services and supplies, we have been sort of chacking, keeping those salaries and benefits low, which kind of ties into some of the presentations that I've given earlier in the year regarding salaries. So this is another way that sort of highlights and shows some of the things that we were talking about. So you will see that some of those, that there is a pretty drastic jump from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two because we've added all those positions, and those have now been added to our budget. But then in reality, what we've spent so far in the year to date, that very, that very right-hand column, we've only spent thirty eight point six percent of our operating maintenance budget this year. A lot of that is because we have a significant amount of open positions. So those, while we have the budget for them, and we want to accommodate for those costs with those positions full, when those positions are open, it's just saving for the city for the interim time that it takes for those ones. Things that are in the services category, the yellow at the top, often will be things like insurance, electricity, internet service, janitorial, shredding, all the kind, all the kinds of things that are part of just operating a business every month. So are there any questions on this portion?
Any questions, council?
Okay. And then the last page just shows sort of the breakdown between those operations and maintenance expenditures and the average capital projects and debt service. So that high graph just shows, I mean, the bulk of the city's funds that we spend are on personnel and overhead, so just the cost of providing services. And then the other additional expenditures are the debt service for different things we've taken out debt on to, to get, taking care of like the vehicles and the bonds for capital improvements, and then actual capital project purchases. And that's pretty standard industry-wise.
So I see that, but these operations and maintenance expenditures pretty much reflect the improvements in our budget. To go back to the first page, it kind of follows along with that our budget is getting better as we're looking better, and we're able to hire and budget for these positions. So we are staying up with that. We're looking at, okay, here we are with our budget, and so we are moving ahead, and as we're able to do that, we're providing extra personnel for these challenges.
Yeah, so those costs are going up, but they, but that fund balance is also making steady or going up as well. And a lot of that is, I know, is that you have to, you know, they say you have to spend money to make money. Well, you have to have the staff in place to provide the services in order to increase the revenue, to provide better services, you know, and which requires hiring more staff. You know, the round, you just look like, they can use them till, you know, you have to do one, and then the other follows. So as we continue to add staff, we would hope, the hope would be that we would continue adding services, the ability to add more services, better value to our customers, and those who revenue follows.
Well, I'm kind of encouraged by this. And one of the reasons is, is there were times in the city where we were kind of living in Orlando, we can't get there from here. And, you know, we didn't have personnel to do it, we didn't have the funding to do it, weren't able to do it, whatever the case was. It seems that if more and more, we're hiring personnel, we're hiring more competent personnel, the graph that we're seeing on the first page is just a sign that our finance department is much more competent. It's continuing to be innovative as a department. And so that's, that's encouraging, and seeing things, reports from different people hired and staff as well. So I think we're, we're hiring, hopefully able to retain very innovative and creative staff. It's allowing people to think a little bit more outside the box, and be a little more creative in that area because they know that they're able to perhaps fill these positions. And I think that's, that's the kind of attitude you want to have at City Hall in order to be able to get things done. Because there will always be a crisis that comes up that we really need creative individuals for. So I, yeah, again, I'm encouraged of saying that, too, and encourage you to say, you know, I'm pretty happy with this.
I just want to say ditto to what you said. Because we, we, when we, yeah, when we went through the, back in two thousand and sixteen, and we were looking at, oh, come on, this can't be right. And the steps that we took at that time to move, to get our surplus, and to start putting things in more cost allocation catered methods, I think that really, really helped. And it's, and it's, and it's shown right here. It's shown right here. So I'm very, I'm very pleased with the results that we're seeing.
What is our target for reserve funds, how much we're going to keep back?
So, um, please, I'm wrong as city manager, but I have not so far located a financial policy that sets that standard for us, which is a big, unless it's somewhere in the code that I'm looking at. No?
We have a very, very old one from two thousand and six, I think.
Okay.
So we do, we do.
We need to review those.
We need to review them.
And then we will need to set financial policies that provide that minimum fund balance for the general fund and for each of the enterprise funds, which operate differently. You know, those enterprise funds, typically you can carry a lower fund balance because their services are, the payment for them is coming in on a regular basis. For instance, your general fund, where you want to keep a higher margin, because sometimes those revenues are less secure, even though taxes, we feel like they are. I mean, the economy goes bust, people still pay for their water usually, which we saw in COVID. But, you know, so we'll look at those things. There are, M R S P provides some really reasonable for figuring out what those minimums need to be in any reserves, and that's definitely a project on the left.
I would like to repeat that during our budget process this year, so we, so we can have that and please, by.
Excuse me, it seems like when we did, when we first started doing, thinking about how much a reserve, do you remember what that was there?
I don't remember what the number was.
But I do remember.
But I, as you say, I do remember, and it was, you know, in that two thousand seventeen, eighteen range. We talked about our reserves and the condition that our, our budget was in. And, and we were concerned that we didn't have adequate reserves. And so we talked about doing that, and that was done at a budget retreat as well. And we, I believe the goal was to set aside a certain amount. Once again, numbers do not stick in my head, and I apologize for that. There are others, Deputy Mayor, numbers stick in his head. And so I rely on him greatly for those sorts of things. I don't remember the number, but I do remember a discussion about that. And the goal was to have a certain amount in reserves at the end of every year, and we were going to try and put that amount. And I believe the city manager was key in achieving that, that happened. So it has, it is a discussion, and I think we need to follow it up, follow it through, take it further.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, Mr. Mayor, I believe it stemmed around having ninety days of payroll available. So at a million dollars a month, that's three million dollars in a rainy day fund. And I believe council, you may not be able to find it, staff, but there was a document or was action that council took creating a fund that could not be removed without a super majority of the council. That was done probably a decade ago or more, but there was a fund that was created that way.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
We do have the contingency fund that rolls into the general fund. And so right now, there hasn't been anything really added or taken from that in recent history that I can tell, but it does exist. So that may be what the Deputy Mayor is referring to.
It is, and actually, there's an ordinance in the annual report that.
Okay.
Well, good. Good, it's all good.
And then I also have the budget calendar, if you want to move on to that. So I just wanted to bring the budget calendar to your attention. I know that Jackie called you guys for the budget for the first budget retreat, so I believe we can set that for August twenty-seventh. And then this calendar is sort of out on my preference that we get the budget done sooner rather than later, and get that final budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-two out of the way by the first meeting of December, so we can not have the second meeting of December. So if all things stay on course, hopefully, that will be what we can achieve this year. That's what we're aiming for. So I did do the call to budget for department directors today, and we have gotten the ball rolling on it.
Council members, any questions on the budget calendar?
Have we got a location yet, or are we still looking?
I believe the city manager wanted to keep the event local this year based on the amount of public interest we had in council. And so I believe we're likely going to have it at our community centers here.
Excellent location. Definitely encourage members of the public to be there. I think that we have had questions, and people have expressed interest, and whether or not they show on that day is entirely up to them. But we certainly want to make it possible for them to be there and to be comfortable during that, so.
I do have a question about that. I remember at one that I went to as both a member and president of potential candidate, my input was not asked for. And that's okay, because I was listening to what the council was talking about. And if I remember correctly, that's how those meetings are held.
That is correct, Ms. Hart. You are absolutely right. At the beginning of that budget meeting or budget retreat, any audience members will be made aware of that very situation, that they are there here. They're not there to participate, they're not there to comment, if they have questions they can ask us, they're great. But certainly not participants in the discussion, but they can learn a great deal by listening. Ms. Mayor.
I just wanted to make that clear, that that was how the protocol was going to be for the budget retreat.
And I would have to reiterate that.
And I would object to that.
I would, I would very much like to hear at the beginning of the meeting what citizens are expecting us to do with their money af- after, after the, after they get the open hearing, cut it off and then let it go. But I would very much like to hear, have the opportunity for citizens to stand up and say, this is what I want, that is my money. Well, that being said, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I understand where Mr. Farmer's coming from, but Mr. Farmer, that's what the public hearings are for, to allow for the public's input. Are you asking to have public comment at the retreat?
I'm asking that public comment at the beginning of the budget retreat. Because, because the public, when, when we, when we have a, I'm sorry, I can't even think of the word I want to, the public hearing. It's already done, it's already written. So why do we have, if, if the public wants to change or bring something up, then instead we've got to go through this whole process again. So why can't we just let them speak at the beginning of the meeting and then go from there?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
In our regard, I think that, I understand what Mr. Farmer is saying. However, we don't exactly know what money we have and what money we're going to be estimating to put in the budget, and what kinds of things our staff are looking at. That's the purpose of the retreat, to take a look at what monies we may be having coming forward and how we're going to allocate them. The public hearings are the place where the public comes in and says, well, can't you put a little bit more money into the parks and raff? Or can't, and at the public hearings, their voices are heard, and we can do those things. It may take a little bit more time, but I think that's the purpose. The way the system is built is the way the system ought to adhere to.
Ms. Hart, any other comments on this item? So my position on that is similar to Ms. Hart's. I'm coming at it from the position of an educator, so keep that in mind. As Ms. Hart said, we don't always know what the department has. As Ms. Hart said, we don't always know what the department has, are wanting or needing. We're coming into the budget retreats to learn what the expectations are going to be for the coming year. I think the audience members quite often come in, and not all of them, we've had several express interests who are former council members and have a fairly good understanding of how the budget system works. But the average community member in Sunnyside does not have a full understanding. I know I had zero understanding of city budget before I became a member of council. So it's an opportunity for them to see how these items are presented to council, how we decide our priorities, and learn maybe that some of the things that they want to have done are not necessarily possible. And also, it's my, why can't these be done? There's opportunities to ask council members during breaks or staff members during breaks. We do take regular breaks. The public hearing is for the purpose of community members weighing in. And they can voice their objections, and they can do so very strongly if they wish to during a public hearing. And that's the time to do that. Then we've got the work in there, we understand a little bit more what's required, what's necessary, what the city is going to need as far as their projections go, and what we have extra to spend on our own pet projects, if you will. So I think the public hearing is probably the best place. I know we have the first one on revenue sources scheduled for October 10. So there's an opportunity to speak, and then we've got another one on November 14, and then another one on November 28. So there's three opportunities for citizens to weigh in and voice their objections and get their opinions heard and for us to respond to that. So there are three opportunities. I know a public hearing can sound intimidating sometimes to people, but we're still the same people, whether we're sitting behind this podium or whether we're in the community center. So they can certainly voice their opinions and encourage them to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I, I just, real quick, Mr. Mayor, the public will also have an opportunity to weigh in when, when the manager presents her budget to council. You know, that's not a time for us normally to weigh in. We, we get it when the manager submits it to us. And that's a time also, we, it'll be a regular meeting and we'll have, you know, public comment during that portion, so people could weigh in there as well. So there's at least three, maybe even four times, that they'll have an opportunity to weigh in before we go to the retreat.
Public comment is two and a half minutes. Three minutes, I just want to remember that, that does not give anybody a chance to weigh in very much.
One thing we have to keep in mind that we are also the public. We didn't know anything about this. We went out there and we asked people to vote for us. We wanted to learn and we want to make the best decision as the public and now as councilmen and women. So it's, we are speaking for everybody in Sunnyside. And that's why we have phone numbers and email accounts, and they have something they can get to us. And then they voted us in to speak for them, and that's all we're doing. But we're not taking away anything that they can't come and get involved with this and go out through the whole system. But I think we have to come up with a budget because we have all the particular information to make that decision. And then, of course, the, the, the open public can come in and comment at that point. But we are also the public. That's what we promised that we would do, and we asked people to vote for us to speak for them. And that's what we're doing, that's the way I feel.
And I agree with Mr. Beal.
All right, who to comment on the same? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for your input. Give us all something to think about and maybe be able to structure things a little bit differently so that people do feel like they have maybe more opportunity to comment to us in other ways. Item C, Community and Economic Development Commission Membership Discussion. Mr. City Manager.
I will pass the vote to you, Trevor Martin.
Mr. Martin. Hello, good evening, City Council. So I wanted to bring the Canadian Economic Development Commission's specific requirements to you. I know we had some discussions about this at a last city council meeting. And I have to hand this code up in front of you. During our last city council meeting, we talked about the number of commission members on this, from five to seven, and how, and how, I think there was some confusion on how the, the council representation on the commission worked as well. And again, I'm not quite clear, because within the code, it talks about a chairperson. So I'm assuming that somebody will be, there will be elected, appointed as chairperson and a vice chairperson. And so I'm just looking for clarification on, do we want seven community members to serve on this with a council dea vam? Do we want council to be one of the seven members and be participants? I'm just looking for some clarification on that, so we can update the requirements.
Well, I believe the Deputy Mayor has had Andy in setting up a lot of the rules and regulations and everything that goes along with the commissions. So I'm asking to weigh in on this. Mr. Deputy Mayor, what are your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think seven is probably the max that we can probably fill in the city. I know that, I, I can tell you that we've tried nine in the past on other boards and commissions, and it didn't work. We were not able to get a number of people to actually serve. And, and the problem you run into is getting a quorum to have business. And there are numerous times when the airport board could not conduct business because it didn't have a quorum. And I just don't want us to get in that situation. I want to hear from, from as many people as we can on these subjects, especially economic development. But at the same time, it should be a workable board, and seven is a good number. It gives you a four as a quorum, and it, it kind of follows council. So when it comes to their, when they decide to do their accounts, their rules of procedure and things of that nature, they can kind of fall in line with, with what council already has.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask, just a qualifier on that now? The council member who serves on any of the commissions is an ex officio, of, of, ex officio presence. Is that not correct, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
That is correct, Ms. Hart. But it's important to understand that ex officio has gotten, has actually, you know, people have gotten that wrong in the past. Ex officio does not have anything to do with voting rights. Ex officio has to do with the fact that the person is holding the position based off of their position. Perfect example is a member of the airport board who works for Astria Hospital in their maintenance area. He's appointed to the board because he's a, an employee of Astria Hospital, and he was appointed by the CEO of the hospital. Same idea.
But, but he, if that person is a voting member.
Correct. That person is a voting member. And if you'll notice on our other boards and commissions, the chairs of all the boards and commissions have the right to move from the chair, make motions, just like any other member. They're not denied any rights just because they're serving as chair.
In other words, they are full people participants.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, they are full participants. And that's what we want, right? We want that with our planning commission, we want that with all of our boards and commissions. Just because the person is volunteering to serve as chair, that doesn't mean that they should not be able to have the, the voice that they are supposed to have on that board or commission.
Thank you, sir. That is very helpful. Council members, any other comments or questions on this? Yes, I'm the, I'm the one who actually brought this, I brought this forward. And, and I think we, you appointed some very competent and very capable people that will do a great job for the city. But I think there's room for another one or two opinions. Another one or two, I, I would like to do it this way, I think this would work. And I, and that's why I wanted to expand how we're going to have the city council member on this committee and then maybe one more, because I, I kind of agree with Deputy Mayor Rasucci. Once you get over seven people, then, then we're starting to have some form problems. Although I think with a bunch, or with the people we have now, I don't think that would be a problem. But you always have to look towards the future. So at, at this particular point, if the, if the city representative is going, going to be on a full void number, then maybe we need to add one more. One more, one more person that would give us a seven member. Okay, comments or questions on, on Mr. Farmer's statement?
We have seven, a nice odd number, so two blocks doesn't happen as much.
And with, with the seven numbers to do that, you can still have a quorum pretty easily. But as far as voting and, and getting ideas in, I think the seven-member commission is, is the best way to go. It works with planning commission, it works with a lot of the other commissions that we have. Some, not all of them are, are seven-member commissions, but like LTAC and, and those ones, that's a good, good way to go. So I would be in agreement with some, a couple more members on the.
The one thing I would add, one thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, about the LTAC, since Ms. Hart brought it up, there are, there are two boards and commissions in, in the city that are, are, are created pursuant to state law, not Sunnyside Municipal Code. And that's the planning commission and the LTAC. And, and the state legislature actually put in the law that the person who represents the city council on the LTAC is also the chair. So that's the only one where the chair is automatically selected. When I rewrote 2.50, I made sure that all the boards and commissions were set up so that they selected a chair and vice chair from their numbers every year.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Other comments on this item? So Mr. Farmer makes an excellent point, actually makes a couple of excellent points. First of all, that one more individual on an already enthusiastic commission can add an awful lot. I think, I also think we don't have to worry about people not showing up for meetings and struggling to find a forum with this particular group of individuals. But thinking long-term, you don't know how long they're all going to be working together. We do have to think for the future. One more individual to break a tie is also a logical choice. Because if we've got five members and one council member, that's, that's a tie. That can, that can create a deadlock, and we don't want that either. So that's not, that's not a bad idea. I have, I have to say, this, this commission has been sitting vacant for some time, and part of it's externally controlled. We just didn't have control over the last couple of years of how things went. But to see the individuals who have applied and have been appointed to this commission, I'm really excited by the people who are there. They are enthusiastic, passionate individuals, they are entrepreneurs, they're, they're forward-thinking, they're creative. I've known most of them for some time, and I'm pretty excited about the caliber of people that we've got appointed to this group. I don't have a problem with one more person being appointed. I think that can be, that could be very helpful. And in fact, I have had an applicant that I've had to say, yeah, sorry, but who would still love to serve given the opportunity. So if council approves that, it'd be real easy for me to fill the position. But.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have one through six as far as getting people. Where would we put this seventh position? Business owner, manager, employees, or another one? Or create something totally different?
This particular individual is a business owner and commercial property owner.
Don't we have one from each list right now?
We do.
Do we have to come up with another list or?
Well, the other, the other is an interest in community and economic development, Sunnyside, which covers a multitude of things. So that, I think, would cover.
Right, and this individual also takes that box as well, so, you know, they take one from one.
Counsel, we could also reach out to the Yakima County Development Association and ask John Smith or someone from YCDA to serve as ex officio as well. That, because they help us with our economic development in this community and we're under contract with them, might be nice to have that person there.
That's a thought too, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Well, did we ask, well, you have more on this, you'd want a clarification, Mr. Martin.
So those are the, you kind of addressed the clarification. So it would be seven members, that number, that, that, those seven members also included the council member as, as a body of seven, which clears that up for me. And then, yeah, the group is appointing a chairperson and, yes, up against seven members.
I just do have, I either B, have a question or a correction. Under terms, term limits shall be four years, and you go down the bottom line, and they're, and serve for an indefinite number of consecutive terms. So if it's a term limit, that means they can't serve for more than that four years. So maybe we need to strike the word limits. Terms shall be for four years, expire on, expire on the 30th of June.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, already, there's already a paragraph in 2.50 that covers that. So all they have to do is actually reference, terms will be set pursuant to 2.50030.
Thank you for that.
I'd also like to question item C as well. So there's also, it also, and I understand that the commission has not met regularly. I'm trying to get, get it going and meeting regularly, but there is a portion here that's, that's codified for when that commission should meet. I'm wondering if we should strike that as well, because we will be holding regularly scheduled monthly meetings. I can get more confirmation from the commission. We are hosting a special meeting tomorrow on Monday, would like to.
Right now, it says, have one regularly scheduled meeting at least quarters. It doesn't say you can't have monthly meetings, it's at least quarters that you shall meet. So the only, the only problem I have with this is that it says the hour of 6:30 PM on the second Wednesday, the first month of the quarter.
Correct.
It's, it's a bit strict. It doesn't seem to take into account that people's schedules might be a little bit, will not work well with that.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, any meeting that they conduct that's outside that has to be considered a special meeting, which means that they have to, they can't talk about anything that's not on the agenda. It actually handicaps them from actually being able to do, to, to, to hold a good meeting.
So is this going to take a vote of council to change this?
Actually, it's an ordinance, sir. So what needs to be done is, an amendment to the ordinance needs to be done, needs to go through the attorney's and manager's office. It needs to be approved to form and brought before council for adoption.
All right, council members, what, what's council feelings on that?
It seems like a pretty straightforward way to approach it. When I, when I saw that the, the first meeting of this new commission was for noon on a, on a Tuesday, I thought, oh, good, the only day I don't have a meeting at noon or at 6:30, but noon really tickles me, because a lot of the people who are on this commission, they are already accustomed, they have a meeting on Fridays at noon. So they're already accustomed to blocking out. So if we were to, you know, go back and, and, and bring this through again and do all that, I think that the 6:30 might create a problem for them. And is there anything that says that you can't have a commission meeting at noon?
No, and, and that was actually one of the things I talked, as we, as we were introduced, I talked to them out in the hallway a little bit. So the meeting came up, kind of came up, and we're floating this idea, we'll talk about it more tomorrow, but maybe having noon meetings, but maybe floating from different business locations of the community, trying to get maybe different parts of the city involved and seeing that we're active. Trying to, you know, corner different parts of the city specifically, that come, come meet with us, come sit down, listen to what we're talking about. That, that's kind of the idea there a little bit.
Okay, other comments, council members?
Mr. Mayor, if, if the council wants me to, I will go ahead and, and do the amendments and get it to the manager's office and this, and the attorney, and get it taken care of so we can have it on our agenda at the next meeting.
Any questions, council?
No objections.
No objections. Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You are so charged.
Thank you, council.
Thank you for offering.
Make it so.
Yeah, that was the line I wanted to use, but I felt uncomfortable doing that.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Martin, any, any more that you wish to discuss?
That's everything. I think we discussed everything.
Okay. Well, thank you for reading. Well, thank you for bringing all of that to our attention and asking those questions. You helped clarify data sets. It's always good to feel like we've done you some service for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have B, parade permit, community event permit, and site plan review fees discussion. That was the matter.
Thank you, Mayor Barison. So we've often, and I would say frequently, not attached an administrative fee to many things that we, that they take a lot of staff time. We, it's come to light from our insurance that the parade permit is something that we will need to go through a process anytime we have a parade. And so what I'm hoping to introduce is just a, a one-time, $100 permit fee for those parades. And a lot of our parades are free for the entrance. Some of them they do have a fee associated with, but most of them are free. But there are also our tons of businesses that would be willing to help with a $100 fee to cover the costs of what the city does. And often, the, that's just the internal cost. So that's just me getting the paper to the chief and it coming back over to my office and so on. This isn't talking about any of the things that go along with parades, which could, is roadblocks and police that present. This is just the staff time to handle the paper. And we, we've got to start doing that because we're doing things for free that have a cost to it. And as our future builds, we want to see those things in our revenues go up so that we have a mechanism to say, okay, is this capturing enough of our admin time? Who's doing what? And so as everything's forward, I will be asking for some kind of associated application fee or administrative fee. So the three that we're proposing is the parade permit, the community event permit, and the site plan review fees discussion, or fee. So I'm going to let Trevor talk on the site plans. This is something that he knows about from his other city work, and I'll hand it over to him.
Absolutely. So in our, in our zoning codes, we have a series of permitted land uses. And generally, what happens is a customer comes to the counter, they want to do something in the zone, and they file for a site plan. After looking through the code, I found that was kind of something that was, that is something that is missing for the city. And it, it throws, it throws a little bit of a loop in things because there's, there, the code talks about a site plan review. So we should be getting a site plan fee that I would review when a new, when a new business wants to build. Those where the building is located, where the apartment lots located, if I have to take it through any sort of development services meetings, anything like that. So there is a review time associated with that, and that time is just close to that. The other thing is, is that I talked to several, several people from uptown, maybe looking to locate business or some sort of services here. And it's not quite clear because they're very used, a lot of developers are used to a certain process. And I tell them, man, we don't have a site plan review fee. Kind of, it makes, it's a weird feeling. It's a weird feeling for a lot of them because it's like, well, then what's the process? What's this, what's that? So this, this puts a, a, a nice step in the process when going, when starting development. You have a site plan review, you have a site plan review fee that is submitted at the same time as building permits. So both things are submitted at the same time and can be processed. It just, it just cleans, it cleans it up a little bit. It takes any guessing work out of this. It can be a modest fee because it's approved use in the zoning district. So that, that's, that's kind of all I have.
Questions or comments, council?
I, I think it makes a lot of sense to have that fee for like site reviews. And I think it certainly makes a lot of sense because we, we, there's insurance that's involved a lot of times with parades and with community events. And for a fee, I think that that's, I think we need to have that. And what you're talking about, I'm that, my, uh, city manager, is the unseen cost to putting on these events. The scene, there's the costs that are, are created by in-house work. And as we all know, a lot of things like that sort of slip by us and we forget that maybe somebody needs to be paying for that. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of the parade permits, the community event permit. And as far as what those costs are going to be, we'll probably negotiate that in some degree. But also as far as the site plan, we, what kind of fee would that look like?
It'd be a lot of cities, they place it between one and $300 for a site plan review.
Is that based on size?
Um, it can be placed based on size. It can be based upon the rate of recapture. You know, the city here, Yakima, it's a hundred dollars. Something like that, I would feel pretty comfortable with, and I don't think it would be anything. And we're also taking into account our, and we would be recapturing.
I, I stand in favor of this.
Okay. The council members, comments?
What other community event are we talking about here that? Are you talking right now to yard sales?
No.
No. So our community events are things that would need right-of-way usage, sidewalks, any public property. And so those are required to go through a vetting process where we look to see, okay, how many police officers need to be at this event? How many streets need to be closed? That kind of thing. Cause a community event is usually open to the public for free or has a slight interest fee. But for the most part, we have to check to see how good proper insurance. And honestly, with our events, that's what WCA did. They went through and looked at everything and said, okay, how much insurance are you requiring? And they upped that. So we know that there's quite a vetting process that we'll want to go through. And I know that Chief Ascolara has already been in talks with how we can get Cinco de Mayo safe sanctuary. So this is an ongoing effort and a hundred dollars is just addressing the budget for doing all the stuff that we do with this. But I think it's important to start building somewhere and, you know, have something at least associated, for the piece of paper and the ink and all the stuff that we're doing to copy and really honestly the time on the phone. It can be quite detailed.
Well, I just know we've always talked about, not we, but the city of here, yard sales. We don't like to charge for yard sales. It's not like they're going to be billionaires having their yard sales. And it does take a lot of staff time paperwork. So, and actually when I have to look at that, I just don't think.
I don't think so either. I think maybe you need to, like I heard today, take a little bite of the open at the time.
So mainly, mainly we're talking about things like Cinco de Mayo, Sunshine Days, the Christmas Parade, maybe even, I don't know about the Easter Parade.
That's a city's voluntary event, but we would still fill them out for ourselves. I mean, that's the thing, the community event process is very detailed and very lengthy. And when they, WCA sends me the parade one, it's just, it's the sample that I went, oh, man, that's going to be a lot of work. I mean, they literally are having to draw a map and show every single barrier that needs to be put up and what times things need to close. And, you know, it's just very detailed. And having to help us like implement parade, it is a big task.
I think it makes a great deal of sense when we consider the amount of staff time that's involved in getting all of us committed, getting it all set up and ready to go. You know, Chief Ascolaro's mentioned to start getting Cinco de Mayo safe for next year. You imagine the amount of time they've already put into this and nobody's asked for a permit and we're not even, we're not even talking about it yet. And so, yeah, it does involve a fair amount of staff time. We charge a hundred dollars, that's what, $25 an hour for four hours. And we know that some of these events is going to take a lot more than four hours to get everything taken care of. And that is time that our staff is dedicated to that event. So there is every expectation that the city should be compensated for that amount of work that staff members go into, even though, yes, we definitely want these events to happen. We're excited as anybody else about them. But that's a fair amount of time that staff has to put into those sorts of things. So there's no reason to not. The site plan is something that has been mentioned, it's done in every city. Contractors simply expect that there will be a site plan fee. It's not even discussed, it's just part of the budget when they, when they talk to the, the customer, they, hey, this is what's going to be there. We have permits, site plans, and all these other things that, that's all part of that. And they just assume that it's going to happen. So it is a little weird when you are going to do a project and say, oh, no, we don't need that. What? It, it, it does seem a little amateurish if, if there's not, because they just assume that those hours are going to be spent reviewing that site plan and making sure that everything works, so. Other comments? All right. Well, hopefully you got the gist of, of council. Item two, upcoming council meetings. That was the matter.
So Wednesday on Federal Way, we will have our seventh National Night Out. And I remember this is an invitation, not invitation only for those neighbors that are around Federal Way. We won't tell anybody they can't count if they show up, but we did want to have some, you know, community building. And we saw the very first one, how that really, really turned into a neighborhood party. And so that's what we're looking forward to. We will have the senior center open for restrooms, having some picnic benches brought in. We're hoping to get under all those nice shaded trees on Federal Way. But Federal Way will be blocked just so, you know, both sides. And they'll need to probably find a good place to park. And then our next one is Friday, August fifth. This is a special meeting as well. This is the National Night Out at the Sunnyside Community Center. And Perla Lopez, that is on our community and economic development board, is helping me at this event because as you well know, I will be uptown on that day applying out in the afternoon. And so she's done an excellent job of basically sitting in my seat and saying, Elizabeth, can you help me with this and help me with that? And she has some really, really cool stuff coming, especially if she was someone that likes to shoot pretend events, and she's got something coming from the other side. And I, I hear there might be a mayor and a visiting.
So, yeah, I'm sending a couple of comments. First of all, both of these are noticed at a special meeting, so any and all council members can be there. And secondly, on Friday, if your aim is good enough, you might be able to dump me in a tub of water. Please be aware that I will be mocking you extensively as you stand there trying to aim, so I'm going to try to throw you off. I figure if I'm going to take the risk of being dumped in water, I am going to respond.
I'm going to be processing, start processing.
Yeah. Council's got to rub her arm there, so. At any rate, Perla has been talking to me some time for some time about this as well. And so I encourage you to talk to Elizabeth, who knows much more about these things than I do. I, I was absolutely exhausted by the number of ideas that she had, so I think it's going to be a fun event.
She's amazing, Gary.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. And then the last one is Monday, August eighth, our regular meeting. We have on the agenda the WABCOG July Regional Prime Dinner presentation, Franklin Court Water Main Improvement Contract Task Order 2002-03 to the Sixty Project Engineering Services, Community and Economic Development Commission membership, and then the parade, community event, and site plan review. Depending on my schedule, I will try to go in, but I got my itinerary and it looks like they have me busy this night as a board member, but I will try my very best. Ken knows that he is going to sit in those seats and he is going to be the advocate. We will have a meeting for at least, and everything will be in the folder for you guys. So I think he'll, he'll be just there and help.
All right. Council members, I do encourage you to show up for the National Night Out events. I was at the first one last week and enjoyed myself immensely. Come meet the members of the community. I know there were a couple of people confused as to who the mayor was, and so I got to introduce myself to them. And they were surprised to go in. I'll call Anna number two, that I actually sneak in. So come on out and meet the community and have some fun with them Friday night, have some fun in my expense, whatever you want to do. But, yeah, there you are. So, there's no further business time before council. And if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned. 10:35.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, Jim.